Yes.
Is Jeff coming in? Sorry, I'm being safe today, Bear.
No, no worries.
My mask between these two. I don't want to get anyone sick in case I have something.
Well, it's always nice to be between the best.
Exactly, it is.
Five, six, zero.
Actually, we get to say that.
Hey Larry, do you know what?
Yeah, right.
Is Jeff coming in?
Supposed to be.
I thought we had to do numbers before.
The area code must be dialed to complete your call. Leave hangup and try your call again.
Is it five, two, zero? Six, zero, 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 four, zero.
For the what?
The forecliff. They help with the...
Not yet, but I'm working with Larry on it.
Okay.
We'll figure it out. I've never heard back from Richard. He only responds when he wants.
I know, I know.
Matt?
Yes.
Okay, we're getting ready to start the meeting, yeah. It's been starting.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
We haven't heard from Jeff.
No.
Tony Barbour might do it. They always have all that stuff.
Well, Larry's talking to Tony.
Okay, oh, okay.
We're working a couple of different...
That's a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, we're working a couple of different angles.
Hello, audience.
Hi, Donna.
Holly's our loyal audience person here, huh?
She's a...
It is, yeah, good.
Hi, Holly.
You're a star or something.
Yep.
There we go.
Everybody must be running late tonight.
Yeah, I know. I was, I was like, oh geez, I'm late already.
Well, I think we're going to start because we have a full agenda and want to make sure we try and stay on task. So, as we move through this, we have three very large subjects to cover and we have an hour and a half to do it. So, I want to try and make sure we leave time for all three. So, as we go through this, item number one on the agenda is a presentation, a discussion on the city charter. So, I think Stephen, you're going to handle this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, we're just going to, as you know, at our last meeting, we approved the council committee members that are going to serve on that. That's going to be seven members of the community. But before we start that meeting, we want to go through a couple of things of recommendations that have come from staff and from the council and make sure that the council's all on board with this and making sure that you have any additional ones that you want the committee to look at. This is obviously just a starting point, so it doesn't mean that this is the only thing that we're going to see, but... Because even the committee could come up with a few extra ones that they want to, too, so...
Yeah, there's no action or anything we need to take on this, so it's really just more informational and feedback to staff in terms of what we want the committee to look at.
Yeah, so it's anticipated that the committee will start meeting in a week or so and we need to have that done before the end of February. So, we have a short order to accomplish. So, we're going to get started here. So, I'm just going to go through this, if you have the charter in front of you, I'm just going to go through each section, starting in the very beginning, of ones that we're looking at. The first one is under Section 3, this is Article 1, Section 3, which is the powers of the city. And this comes out of our planning department. In our charter right now, it states, it talks about comprehensive plan. Now, in the planning world, comprehensive plan and general plan are really interchangeable. It doesn't really matter. In some states, they call them comprehensive plans, but generally speaking, in Arizona, we call them the general plan. So, the recommendation is to change that to general plans and make it consistent with other cities.
We'll make it consistent with what we call it, too.
That's right. The second one has to do with architectural review. Right now, it says that it applies to everything except for detached, single-family dwellings, which we know that's not the case because we do on our P A Ds and even with the new R2s that we've recently... Architectural review does come back in front of the planning commission or staff to review, including single-family dwellings. Those are the different elevations that we're talking about. So, we need to change that to allow it to happen for detached, single-family dwellings. And feel free to pipe in anytime that, you know, you don't understand something.
I think, Stephen, also that one of the things we're trying to do is make our city charter consistent for what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's really the focus here.
That'd be very helpful, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
So then, we move on to the term of the mayor. It's proposed to change that from a two-year to a four-year and then to eliminate the term limits.
Yeah, and let me chime in on this. This is just to have the committee look at it.
Yeah.
To look at the feasibility and whether it's something that the community even wants. If they don't want it, then it doesn't need to be in there. If everybody feels that it's fine the way it is, then take it out. This is just, I just wanted them to look at it. That was me, this was my suggestion, so...
Yeah, the last time they did this in 2007, a lot of these same things were brought up and the committee said, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that and...
Yeah, so we'll see what to come back with.
Yeah, it's ultimately what the committee decides, so those are the ones...
Stephen, when you go through this with the committee, do you give background information on what other cities, you know, like, hey, these cities, this is why we're looking at it, some cities are going away from this and... Or no, is it just, hey, let's just have discussions and have that?
No, we do have that background. The league actually put together a document for charters and it shows all the ones that have mayors for two years or four years.
Okay.
So, it's a mixed bag, but we can provide that information to the committee members.
To the committee, okay, thank you.
So, the next one has to do with the city manager. And I guess I bring this one up not because we feel there's an issue with this, but mainly when you're trying to recruit for a city manager. I've been in several states, most city managers have contracts. Not usually the case here in Casa Grande because it's, a lot of it is spelled out in the city charter. And so, that can be a pro or it can be a con. And so, I just want to make sure that we are marketable in the fact that you may have some city managers that come here and then they go, oh, we don't really offer a contract or it can only be two years long and the other stuff is provided in the charter. And then they go, well, I'm not interested in that because I'm used to having a contract that spells out everything, including compensation, terms, benefits, termination, all that is in a contract. But in the charter, it spells out certain things related to termination or to even hiring. And so...
Does the current charter preclude a contract?
It doesn't preclude it.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude it, but it limits it to two years.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Brett, you had...
Hey, Mayor.
I was just...
Yeah, I agree, yeah. You're right, Matt.
I have a question. Stephen, when they go to this committee meeting, excuse me, are you going to provide them with examples, like you said, the stuff from around the state about two-year, four-year terms and also contracts and stuff? Provide the committee members some information on that so they have it in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, I figured you would, but thank you.
Is there any questions about the city manager one?
I just know who my preference is.
This is what?
Who your preference is?
So, as we move on and Article 4, we have a couple, the city clerk and the city treasurer are currently, state in our charter that they're approved by the city council, which is a little different in the sense that both those positions actually report to the city manager. And so, when you have an approval of those by the city council, it makes an extra element that's a little different. And so, the idea would be to either remove or change that in the city charter. The other part of it is, when we talk about the city treasurer, we don't really have a city treasurer. You could probably interpret that as being the finance director, so we could change that. But right now, yeah, I mean, it listed as a city treasurer, which we don't really have that title. And then, the final one is under the city attorney and I wrote that right in there. It says right now that the city attorney shall represent the city in all legal proceedings. Well, right now, he doesn't do that. We hire external councils for a lot of different things, workers' comp, sometimes when we have claims against the city. So, we want to change the wording on that so that we're not in violation of it in the fact that... I'm sure that Brett is aware of everything that's going on, but he's not doing all of those. And so, we just want to make that change. The next one is Article 6, Section 6. This has to do with finances. We don't perform interim audits and so, these are not performed right now and so, we just kind of need to take that out. We have annual audits. And, because the other one it says is, right now, is consider removing not less than quarterly. So, it's saying that we're having quarterly audits, which we don't have. We have them every year. And so, just some word changing. Obviously, I think when we're talking about a charter here, we will probably have some housekeeping items that will be all lumped together of things that are just kind of minor and then we'll have other substantial things that will probably be voted on separately.
Right, so you'd have one article in charter change that would say, these are grammatical changes, right? We're going to change it from interim to annual. That kind of stuff will be lumped into one yes vote or so we don't get all of them turned down by one yes vote or one no vote?
Yeah, and mayor, members of the council, that's what we did the last time that the charter was done. The committee actually recommended kind of a host of changes, which were sort of conforming changes. Some of them were typographical, some of them were actually substantive, but would conform to state law. Although, some of those have made it interesting for us. Like, the committee itself, not staff recommendation is the one that said we should change the election portions of our thing, which is why we now have our elections in August and November. But we, you will have to look at that. Ultimately, council will do that. I think we would generally ask the committee to consider that, though, to say, hey, part of it is just what should be changed in the charter, but remember, it must be approved by the voters and it must be consistent with state law and then approved by the governor. So, we certainly may want to package different things to make sure that you don't lose, you know, some of the, maybe the low hanging fruit as you move forward.
Okay, thank you.
The audits, having been done quarterly or annually?
No, they're done annually.
I know, I see what it says right now. How many audits do we do?
We do once a year, once-a-year audits.
Financial?
Financial.
Okay.
Yep. And, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, if I can expand on that just briefly. The statutes require the city to conduct an annual financial audit by an outside firm annually. This, that's what we've been complying to.
So, we have the one audit that's statute annual?
There's one external independent auditor that conducts and issues the opinion on the financial statements, which is pretty typical throughout the state and likely the nation. There are a variety of different audit engagements that may take place, either internal or external, throughout the year or throughout various years, but ultimately, the statutory requirement is one external independent review a year.
Okay, we good?
Yeah, so we just need to fix that so that it's consistent with state statute.
Okay, the next one is Article 7, Section 5. This talks about when actions are taken by ordinance. So, obviously, we know an ordinance takes two readings and a 30-day cure period. Resolutions are enacted by one reading and then a 30-day cure period. Right now, these three items are listed in our charter and I can read them. Actions providing for any specific capital improvement having a cost of more than $50,000. Anything that costs more than $50,000 is required as an ordinance. Number two, actions providing for the appropriation or expenditure of any public money in excess of the sum of $50,000, unless the amount has been appropriated in the current budget. That's been a little, I think, a little bit confusing in the past because what actually has been appropriated in the current budget? So, if we have a line item that has $150,000 in it, has something that's over $50,000 been appropriated in the budget? Well, maybe if it was completely spelled out under each project, you may be able to argue that point. But in most cases, we've taken the position, anything over $50,000, we're taking back to the council. And so, our proposal is to either increase these amounts, obviously, these were amounts back in 2007 and they were upped at that time, so they either need to be upped again. I guess my suggestion would be not even to have dollar amounts in there because the minute you put dollar amounts, it's in stone for a while and you can't, it's going to require changing it again when you do it again. We do have a procurement code, which we could alter that by ordinance and change it and that would allow some more flexibility and it would only have to be done by an ordinance instead of taking it to the vote of the people. Obviously, we're trying to become more efficient with some of these, too, in the fact that when we release a contract and it's over the $50,000, there's a process that goes involved. And if we were to change that to make it a resolution, because it doesn't necessarily have to be an ordinance, we could make it a resolution over the $50,000, then it would be one reading and a 30-day cure period. We'd shave 14 to 21 days off the process, which would be beneficial to the city and it'd be beneficial to the contractor.
Often do we spend over $50,000? All the time, it seems like.
Yeah.
Right here, we're over that.
Regularly, almost, it seems like everything that we do nowadays is over $50,000.
And Stephen, I think that with what Lisa had asked about, if we have, you know, other cities to look at and how we do that, I think it will be important for this committee to understand for those communities like us, how they do it. Because I'd be interested in knowing how they've changed their, you know, to fit that.
What their rules say.
The other one is number five, which none of us even know what this means, maybe the fire chief does. But it says, actions providing for the establishment or changing of fire zones and limits. No one even knows what that is, so our recommendation is to eliminate that because we don't believe we use that at all.
We prefer not to have any local fire zones. Governmental area, huh?
So, then we go to the next one and this is, this is talking about the second reading. And this is really interesting. Brett actually had explained this to me a couple of times because I was confused as to why we're even doing the second reading. Because when you read in the charter, it, under the second reading section, or, I mean, under the ordinances of the charter, it doesn't mention anything about a second read. It's actually found in our emergency clause in Section 7. So, it says, an emergency measure may be added to an ordinance upon its second reading and final passage at the same time as when it first introduced upon the affirmative vote of three fourths of the council and upon its receiving the approval of the mayor. So, we've, based on that, that's why we're doing the second readings, not because it says that in the other section where it should be, only because it talks about a second reading because, but, so that's what we've been doing for years.
Got to have your approval.
And frankly, I don't even know, how long have we been doing the second readings? For as long as...
Decades.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's been a consistent interpretation of the charter since it was adopted. So, we've always had two reads. And there's, you can look back at some of the committee, this was one of the things that was recommended by staff at the last charter committee and the charter committee at that time, largely, it was a very different time in around 2007, but actually said, no, we don't want to do that because sometimes there's not enough information out there until you've actually heard the item. So, they liked the second reading at that time. Staff, I think, is looking at it today.
Of course, we didn't do the number of study sessions that we do now.
Right, and that's, and now it's on television, now you have the web, we have a lot of different information, which is why I think that staff's recommending looking at it a second time to say, hey, do we really need to have these second readings of ordinances? But that's also why we're visiting with you tonight to find out if you really like second reads, then... Because ultimately, you'll have to make the recommendation, the committee's going to make the recommendation to you and you're going to decide what gets placed on the ballot.
But I think that you made a very good point, that times have changed from 2007 to now. We have opportunities for people to be involved and to understand, if they wish, through all the different, you know, mediators that we have.
Yeah, and again, this kind of also goes back to what Lisa and Donna said, you know, what are other cities doing? You know, what's happening out there? That would be helpful to try and also understand.
It's part of what we want to do, isn't it?
Yeah, directionally, where we want to go.
And I think on this item, we tried to find a city that had a second reading, I don't think we could find one, so...
Well, there you go, just answered that question.
And it's pretty rare that we vote on something and then just say, oh, well, we'll wait for the second reading. We don't really do that.
Right.
Ever, I don't think, right? I mean, we usually try to take care of something, we'll table it before we approve or...
Before it gets there.
Yeah.
Do we ever do final passage at the same meeting?
That's, a number of cities do different things, right? Not a lot have second readings where you actually vote twice, which is what we do. Some cities, though, require that you do a first reading and you don't do anything. You just read the ordinance, present the ordinance, and then you come back at the next meeting to actually discuss it. Ours is a little different because we actually vote twice on it. We discuss it at the first reading. So, you kind of have a different things, different cities kind of look at it different ways. If you just took out the second reading piece, you'd be able to pass it at your first meeting on first passage without an emergency clause. So, that's why it, you know, again, it didn't pass at the last charter committee because they wanted kind of that second bite. But given that the times have changed significantly in terms of the information that's out there, the ability to have everything on the web, the paper, you know, being digital for even the people that, you know, don't want to get the paper in hard form when it gets rained on like mine did all weekend, you know, it's available to do that, so...
Seems like a lot of times, the second reading, when you're skipping a meeting before you can confirm it, the, it gives us a chance if we have questions about something we've handled, which has happened very often and want to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page if they have questions or whatever.
But I think to the mayor's point, because we have study sessions now where, you know, we didn't before, I think that that helps, you know, take away some of that question.
And I think it's just going to be a habit we have to get into to make sure that if there's questions, we table it or ask, you know, for further discussion, you know, whatever. So, I think it is going to be just a habit, changing the way we do it.
Okay.
The final one on this slide has to do with the publication of ordinances. And so, we have to publish in the newspaper twice the full ordinance. So, it goes in the newspaper and that's a sizable cost to the city. I mean, I think we're close to $30,000 this year that we're in publication costs. And so, in this day and age, I don't feel there's a need for that because we have Facebook, we have other avenues for people to get a hold of this information and actually publishing it twice in the newspaper in the entirety is pretty substantial.
The only thing I would do a caveat on that is that my understanding is we were going to be looking at changing it just to be consistent with state law.
Okay.
The biggest, because state law requires that we publish the ordinances anyway. The bigger piece is really deciding how many items you want to do by ordinance. And you can see, we've tried to limit some of those, for example, since capital improvements over $50,000 have to be by ordinance. This year, we asked you to adopt one ordinance approving all of those so we could then do resolutions. So, instead of doing 20 ordinances, we did one ordinance and 19 resolutions, right? And that saves a significant amount of money, it saves a significant amount of time. So, we can remove some of this or say, consistent with state law, but we'll still be publishing pursuant to state law, regardless of anything in here, because we cannot make changes to the charter that would be inconsistent with state law.
But if we eliminate, we eliminate, you won't be publishing it twice.
So, yeah, except when state law requires it, right?
Okay.
There are times where you still have to do that.
Okay.
I think the idea, though, is to, if state law changed, for example, to say you don't have to publish it because you're going to put it on the web, we want to have that ability and not have to deal with it from the charter perspective.
So, that's, I was going to ask for clarification, so it says, in the paper, does that mean in writing, like, hard copy? Or because the paper, our local paper has done such a great job of going, media, you know, I mean, does that not suffice?
Yeah, and eventually, the state's probably going to look at changing something because of the way it is. But right now, what it says is a newspaper of general circulation, right? And so, generally, we've used, obviously, the dispatch for years to do our legal advertising and...
And I will say, that's a league issue, too. The league is addressing that exact question because of technology.
So, the next one has to do with the judge. Obviously, the judge selection process can be somewhat cumbersome. Right now, the judge term is the same as the mayor and a committee selection is required. And so, the staff's recommendation is to change that a little bit to allow some language to make it either for a longer term or that the council can allow the incumbent to keep going without having to go through a process. So, that would give you the option, so we can either make it as stringent as you want or we can loosen it up so that it gives you the option. So, not every two years, we're going through a judicial selection committee when you're completely happy with the current judge.
And if I'm correct, the last time we did this, the committee themselves came back and said, we suggest four years instead of two years, anyway.
Okay, well, let the committee look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or questions? Matt, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mayor, I'm good right now. You guys covered it all.
Just the one on the judge, that's the only one that I feel strongly about and I do think having some authority to retain the judge is a good way to go. But, anyway, all the others are certainly legitimate questions, but I know that judge issue is one we've struggled with, so...
Okay. Any other comments, question, anything you guys want added to that list?
Yeah.
I mean, we've sent this out a couple of times and you've all had an opportunity to give feedback. So, if there's anything that comes to mind, even in the next week or so, you want to give it to Stephen and he can add it to it, okay? Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, just one additional item to the additional comments by the mayor and council. Certainly, once the committee begins to meet, they may have some changes that they may be proposing as well. As Mr. Wallace has pointed out on a couple of occasions, ultimately, they'll be coming back with some level of recommendation in a report that mayor and council will consider for, and essentially, that will drive what may or may not go onto the ballot.
All right, and our timeframe's pretty short.
That's right.
So, this has to be solidified by when, Larry, April?
End of February.
End of February.
Oh, end of February.
The people that are responsible for this, who actually is it?
The committee?
We picked them last, we picked them on the last council meeting.
No, no, I'm talking about the ones that they're going to...
I didn't bring the list with me, but I can remember Rebecca Como, Nancy Kaywood, Donna McCray Jr.
Bob Jackson.
Bob Jackson.
Mike Cruz.
Oh, Michael Cruz, yeah.
No, what I was thinking about is the idea to come up with the structure of this, where did that come from?
The structure of the committee?
Of what we're doing, yes.
Similar to what we did last year.
Yeah, well, last, the last time we did it, I think there were 16 members of the committee, but we struggled to even get seven, frankly. I mean, literally, it took me months to get a hold of people and some people said, I can't do it. So, we struggled to even get seven to get on there. Probably more the mayor really want, just because you need people to go out and support that when they start talking to the public.
So, is this, is this just local period? There's nothing to do with the state or anybody else or whatever?
Nope, this is just our charter, our city charter.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, just a reminder, we've got about 30 minutes to cover two more topics, so...
Don't we have an hour?
Oh, I'm sorry, you got an hour, never mind. Never mind.
Thirty each.
We're right on schedule, mayor.
Perfect. Thirty minutes each, so Scott, I imagine you're handling the next one?
Yes, sir.
I think it's all scheduled.
We're on. Mayor McFarlane, members of the council, it was a year ago that staff brought to you a staffing contract with a company called SmartWorks. Specifically, it was done to allow our city manager to begin to draw the retirement benefits that he had earned through the Arizona State Retirement System and continue to serve as a city manager. There's at least one of our neighboring communities that, that did that as well. And so we brought that to you a year ago, and the, the contract language was in place, and there was discussion with, among the council about the scope of that agreement. And through adoption of the resolution in relationship to the contract, the decision was made that at that particular point in time, the scope of the agreement in terms of current city employees being able to contract back would only extend to the city manager at that time. Now, the, the fact of the matter is that the individuals from other Arizona cities, towns, counties, what have you, could take advantage of this agreement, and certainly, we know that individuals are retired from out of state that has nothing to do with Arizona. So that was the decision that was made. But during that conversation, there was a, a request to bring that back at some particular point in time. So here we are, a year later, and having successfully negotiated the, the time with, did I say a year? That's a year, that's right. No, this is 22, two years ago.
Two years, wow.
Okay.
It's like yesterday.
We actually negotiated that, our city manager successfully completed the, the requisite year, or the, the year that was going to be involved with the contract, and then transitioned back into city employment, which was the, the intent. So we're bringing that back to you for consideration at this particular time. There was a discussion about how it's going to be applied, who would be eligible, who wouldn't be eligible, how the decisions would be made. I've tried to outline some of those in the white paper for you this evening, but the fact of the matter is that one of the reasons we're bringing it back, not the least of which primarily, is that we requested to do so, but certainly in terms of the world that we're negotiating today, it's a, it's a difficult labor market out there. It's a seller's market in many cases, and we're feeling that, we're seeing that along with everyone else. And it would be to our advantage, I think, in, in the short term and the long term, to have as many tools in our tool bag, recruiting tool bag, as we could. I would emphasize that we don't have anybody in mind at this particular point in time that would be an individual that would be qualified, and we want to contract back. Don't have anybody in mind, but we'd like to be able to have this tool in our tool bag. And so the contract, I, I should have talked about, SmartWorks was, there were two companies involved in all of this. One was SmartWorks, and the other was ESI. And both of those companies were founded basically with, in, in the, the throes of teacher shortage, and they had their initial focus in, in the schools, where teachers were retiring, creating a shortage of teachers, and so there was a desire to be able to contract back teachers back into the classroom. They would be able to draw their earned benefits from the state retirement system, but, but be in the classroom as well. And so that's how the two companies came to be. After our agreement with SmartWorks was approved, SmartWorks was acquired by ESI, and so there's really one large company involved. And so we brought an amendment back to you so that we have the right name on the contract, and we continue to be, have a relationship with ESI. The only company, the only individual that we've dealt with under contract with ESI was our, was our city manager. The contract itself would require no amendment to accommodate other City of Casa Grande employees who were retiring out of ASRS, and we wanted to contract back. The contract wouldn't require an amendment, but the resolution that adopted the contract, because it was limited in scope to only the position of city manager, the resolution would have to be amended, and should we get direction from you to bring that back at a future meeting, we'd be bringing back an amended resolution. So the issue is that the, being able to have this and use it, again, existing city employees who were, reached normal retirement under the Arizona State Retirement System, who wanted to continue to work for us, and we wanted them to continue to work for us, they would be able to retire under the terms of ASRS and be contracted back through ESI with the city. And they would be able to draw their retirement benefits and be employed and receive a city paycheck as well. You might ask, well, does this apply to public safety? And the answer is, it doesn't apply to public safety. Public Safety Retirement System has a unique feature called the Deferred Retirement Option Program, and individuals who qualify for normal retirement under the PSPRS are able to enter to the drop program, and they literally retire. Their contributions end, our match ends, and their retirement benefit, on a monthly basis, goes into a special account that's maintained for them and has actually a guaranteed minimum interest rate. And for a period of five years, those employees can be in the drop program, but they have to separate at the end of five years. So this would not involve them. The fact of the matter is that if someone retired out of PSPRS and came to work for us in a position that was covered under ASRS, there's no particular provision, prohibition against that. There's some fine points in the law that we have to pay attention to. So this only applies to those of our employees outside of public safety who are involved in the Arizona State Retirement System. So that's the essential issue that we wanted to bring to you in study session this evening, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Lisa?
I have a comment, I was just waiting if anyone had any questions.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, I just, like, like before, I, I just am a little concerned about opening this up to all employees. I do believe that, you know, I understand your point that we need tools in the toolbox, and I know there are certain circumstances where we, we might need to maintain, you know, someone with the experience as with Larry. I don't regret it, I support it, I'm 102,000% happy we did this with Larry. However, my only concern, Scott, is that, and I understand the, the teaching, the education piece, because I think it's a different industry, and because there's a shortage of teachers, there might be a need to bring teachers back, you know, that are going to retire because you have such a shortage. But with the city, and pardon my mask, I just want to be safe, you know, with everyone. My only concern is that as, as a city, you know, the, the city is a well-sought-out employer. There's a lot of people that want to, you know, work for the city. There's great benefits, there's great jobs, so if we're going to open this up to people, so the minute they retire, we hire them right back, I just feel that we're not getting, you know, new ideas, new people. There's, there's going to be, you know, maybe a lack of mentoring and succession planning with some of the, you know, our employees, so we can groom people to move up and take some of these positions. So that, that's my concern. Look, I value all of our employees. We, we have unbelievable employees that bring so much to our city and so much knowledge. You know, it, it is valuable, but I do believe that change is good, too, you know? And, and if we're going to just keep this cycle in, you know, that where people are going to retire, come in, retire, come in, it, that concerns me. I, and I understand, I don't know, you, you say you don't have anyone in mind, you know, it might be a case-by-case basis, but I, I get concerned with consistency, too. If you, you know, allow one person, then how are we not allowing it for everyone else? So I don't know, I, I mean, these are just some of the concerns that I have. So I would be very cautious on, may, if we did need it for some unusual circumstances, you know, I, I think I would be comfortable with that, but opening it up for all employees, I, I'm, I'm very concerned with that. Hope it makes sense.
Yeah, and let me ask a question based on, on Lisa's comments, but we would have pretty strict rules on who would qualify for something like this, correct, Scott?
The expectation is that we would establish guidelines that, and I've, I've listed a few of those there, but the bottom line is that, that you are putting it in the hands of your city manager to make those decisions. And so it's an issue of, of communicating your feelings or your policy to the city manager, but it's also an issue of, of trusting that he's going to make the right decisions. But we will have guidelines, but ultimately, bottom line, it's the city manager's decision.
Right, so, so, but there would be some qualifying requirements, this is not, I mean, Lisa used the word to kind of open it up to all employees. Well, it's not really opening it up to all employees, because they don't all, won't all qualify, at least I wouldn't expect.
But the qualifications were pretty broad, that you don't, can't have a negative, you know?
Well, I think we can, we can make those a lot more strict, right? So we can, we can affect that, and that's, that's some good communication, I think, back to Larry and the staff, to say that, you know, maybe we, before you bring it back, come back with some little more strict requirements in terms, you know, in other words, this should be the creme de la creme that you want to rehire back in the city. And I agree with, you know, needing the tools and trying to, you know, have some process in place to try and take advantage of any good employee that we want to keep, you know, or bring back. Bob?
I, I have similar concerns to what Lisa has, maybe, maybe a little bit different specifically, because I, I see this transferring the incentive or the beginning point of it back to the employee. An employee may desire that when they reach their, their retirement age and, and points, that they, they be allowed to come back to the city. And I, I have to assume that that would be some kind of an application process to, to open that door. And where, where ultimately my concern is, is that how, how do we protect ourselves? How do we protect the city from grievances, from lawsuits? Because eventually, there's going to be somebody that gets turned down when their buddy just got approved, you know, six months ago. And I, I don't know how you defend that, and, and I'm afraid that the, the common practice would be, well, if, if you, if you check all these boxes, then yeah, you qualify, and we'll, we'll hire you back. And to Lisa's point, I don't know that that's always is a good idea. Some attrition, some rotation is, is good for the city, and I, I don't know how we would control that. Mayor, to your point, you know, maybe if this comes back to us with, with some more clear rules and regulations, maybe it would, maybe it would look more attractive. I also hesitate to throw all this on Larry's shoulders, because he would be the ultimate authority, and, and for him to have to say, yes, it's okay for you, but not for you, I, I think that's a, that's a tough position to be put in.
If I could speak to, to that point just for a moment, because there really is an issue of parity here with PSPRS. The idea of a police officer or firefighter going into the drop program is absolutely unilaterally the employee's option. We don't have a choice.
Right, right.
Okay, so when, so there is an issue of parity, or an issue of trying to treat employees somewhat the same in relationship to continuing employment, although it, it's seamless on PSPRS with the drop program. So I simply wanted to point that out, that, that we talk about whose option it is. In terms of the, of, of someone in PSPRS, we have no choice.
But Scott, how could we, you know, to Bob's point, how can we make sure we protect ourselves and protect Larry in terms of potential lawsuits because we disparaged against one person versus another? I, I know that's probably an impossibility, but, I mean, there's got to be some ways that we can put some system in place that would allow us to, you know, at least have some protection.
If I put my risk manager hat on for a moment for you, there's absolutely no way that you can protect against the possibility of someone alleging discriminatory treatment. The good, the one good thing is that pretty much anybody that qualifies for this program is going to be over 50, so you're not going to see an age discrimination in Employment Act lawsuit, because everybody will be over 50. But someone could allege that I was treated differently because of my, all the other six protected categories, age, race, sex, national origin, disability status, or what have you. Those, those, those risks occur, we, we have those every day.
Well, and so, I mean, if it's okay with everybody, I, I think we should move forward with it, but come back before we have a vote on it with more defined.
Mayor?
With a more defined process, I guess, so that I think either we feel comfortable or we won't, right? So, I mean, we can say no at that point in time. I don't, I don't want to put a whole lot more burden on somebody to put a lot of work into this if we're going to all just shut it down. But I, I think it's an option that we should probably look at. And Matt, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to say thanks to Lisa and, and Bob for the comments, I agree with those. And to the point of the PSPRS, it's kind of part of the deal when you take a, a more dangerous job, because everybody knows that going in. So I, I'm thinking that that's not a real good comparison, because, again, it's for those people that take those type of jobs, and it's always been that way.
Right, okay. Mr. Levitt?
Scott, I, I don't see in here how the salary for the employee would be determined. You know, the school district, when you come back on ESI, you come back at 80% of the salary you left out. But I don't see that in here. Would they come back at the same salary?
I haven't spoken to that issue, because the, in the promotional material that, that the company's used to talk about this, what they call phased retirement, they do speak as an example, they typically talk about contracting back somebody 80%, but the fact is that it's totally on, it's totally up to the employer how to make that happen. If somebody retires, we, from the Arizona State Retirement System, the employee or employees share 50, and the cost, we pay exactly the same amount. And today, that's right, just under 13%. But the fact is that if an employee in ASRS contracting back is filling a position that would normally contribute to ASRS, the city's obligated to pay what's called an alternate contribution rate, which, which varies, but it's, it's between 7 and 8% right now. So there's, there's about a 4% savings right off the bat. But I haven't addressed the compensation issue here, because pretty much hiring somebody is, is a matter of, of some issue in our structure, but also an issue of, of somewhat of negotiation as well. So that's certainly something that is spoken of in some entities, and you're somewhat of an expert. I was able to get the materials from the Casa Grande Elementary School District, and they, they specifically speak to that issue.
Mayor? One of the things that concerns me is, is when you're looking at certain people, you may not need six of them, or eight of them that are in the department, and want, want to be able to do that. And it, basically, I, to me, it's almost like picking apples, and, and you try to pick the ones without a worm in them, and the ones that are bitter off, and, and, and that's kind of what you do with employees a lot of times, is, is you may be really good, but you're not going to fit in where, where we are right now, or whatever. And, but I think, on the other hand, that if we have a need for somebody that's really, really good, we ought to grab them, you know? They, that would be a, a good way to get some, we've had that happen before, where we might need engineers or something else back, back with us, so.
You can't fill the positions now.
I, I think it's going to be kind of a touchy, I think everybody agrees that, that.
Yeah, I, I would envision it where you have a pool of people, right? You have a job opening, because this person retired, and you have a job opening, and then the group, you go out and you solicit and get the best people you can for the job, and if the person who had the job is the best person for the job, then why wouldn't you hire the best person for the job?
But that's different than what we're saying here, though, is it? No? Okay, so it would be.
It's not an automatic, no, there's no automatic here.
Right.
Right? I mean, am I wrong there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, from my perspective, you're not wrong. At least in my mind, again, I, I believe Mr. Barber has, has done a nice job outlining to the council that in order to allow an option for an existing employee who may have retired and be out even within the year to return to work in, at least in Casa Grande, and probably other entities, they're going to have to work through one of these third-party entities in order to, to, to.
Try and even reapply.
And still qualify for Arizona State Retirement. What I'm hearing this evening is a couple of things. Number one is, I want to reiterate what Mr. Barber has indicated, that, that ultimately, there's not any changes that can take place unless the. that, that ultimately, there's not any changes that can take place unless the mayor and council would be supportive of an amendment to the resolution that you passed two years ago. Number two, it's, it appears to me that the council is asking for what a program may look like if we were to create that. We've, we've talked about that in the past. We talked about that during the last conversations that we had with all of you two years ago. Ultimately, it was decided to limit the scope of that. So, we've, we've, we've got what I consider to be some parameters that we can revisit and ultimately come back to the mayor and council with a program. But to, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I think the program would define that. I mean, if, if at the end of the day, the council is open to, to allowing this tool for, for us as an organization, only if, if an employee would reapply, and then it become an option to hire on at ESI, you know, I, I think that, I think that that's, that we have some flexibility and the program can be somewhat broad. Mr. Lavender brought up, Councilmember Lavender brought up tonight the issue about salary. Again, that's something that if the mayor and council would like to see that in a program, then ultimately, we would be happy to include something of that, of that element in a, in a, in a proposed guideline or program for the mayor and council. Tonight's meeting was primarily to reintroduce it and to actually get some guidance from mayor and council. And, and, and at the end of the day, if the decision is, you know, we don't want to hear this again, then we'll pack it up. And I, I do agree with Mr. Barber that, that it can be a tool. I don't necessarily, from a practicality perspective, see that it's one that we would use regularly. There are some cases in specific positions that I, I believe that that would be to an advantage, it would be to our advantage to have the tool available to, to us in, in trying to find the most qualified candidate, particularly in those technical positions that are, that we have difficulty hiring for. But at the, at the end of the day, if the decision of the council is not to make this, to make that, that resolution modification or amendment any broader than it is today, then we'll continue to follow the same practices that we have in the past. It's just not an option to us today. And, and I guess just one other thing that I would close with. Mr. Barber had outlined the fact that there is, that we do, we do not have any, anybody in mind. That is absolutely the case. There's been probably, in the two years that we've, we adopt, since the mayor and council adopted the, the resolution, there's been three employees that we have, that we have, that we have talked about as a staff to say, if this option was available, we would probably be looking to utilize it here. And all three of those individuals, we've had conversations with, and all three of them have said, we're retiring. It's our time to go. And so, I, I think that's the practicality of it as well.
Yeah, we gone.
And to add to that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, is the final word. That we can get lost in the, the what-ifs because we're talking about it conceptually. But in the final analysis, when it gets right down to it, I really don't think we're going to, to be seeing it used very often. But again, it's, it's a tool that we'd like to have.
You know, it's not, it's not going to be a huge amount of people.
No, that's what he's saying.
Quite obviously. And, and if there's three of them and you can only, only need one, you're, you know, that's, you pick the best one and.
Yeah. Jeff, you had a comment?
Well, I've certainly seen, on a personal level, my own situation, but also at the school district, how beneficial this could be. And it's available to all employees at the school district. But I do have a little bit of concern if we put the employee through the hiring process because if we didn't hire somebody that had glowing recommendations, we would be in that lawsuit area that Mr. Huddleston talked about. So, I don't know necessarily I would want to have to put people through that process. And we, we would really have to look at, you know, how we do evaluations and things like that. Because that, that could really open up.
Takes a lot of discretion, doesn't it?
Yeah, but it has been very beneficial for our school district to bring our very best people in. We have good people in this organization from top to bottom who work hard and the ability to offer incentives like this. People are working a lot harder, a lot longer than our state retirement system allows. You know, at 80 points, we have people that are retiring in the state at, at age 50 who've been working since they were 20, and things like that, who want to work 10, 15 years later and can be contributing. So, I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we benefited by Larry. I think we benefit by the drop program and keeping good officers, good firefighters onboard. And I think we would benefit by keeping other employees with us as well.
Okay, well, I think, I think you all have heard kind of some of the comments from folks and some of the questions that might be in some of our minds. And so, if we could maybe try and answer some of those questions with a little more of a, I guess, defined process, I guess, would, would that be fair?
It's fair, but I just wanted to comment on Jeff because, you know, you mentioned that you offer it to all employees. So, I think this is an important policy that we're setting here. And so, are we willing to do that to all our employees? Because that, you're saying it's successful because everyone has the opportunity. So, I think that's, that's my issue and concern is, are we going to allow this? So, anyway, but I, I'm open to seeing some of the guidelines and, you know, how we plan to do it. And I understand there are some positions where we might need to. But I, I'm definitely open to seeing what the guidelines would, would be if you came forward with that.
Mayor, and just in closing, I think that the transparency is going to be really important. And so, the guidelines, I know that we have an employee engagement group and to, and, you know, to bring those in and, and get some input for them. I mean, but I do think it's a tool that we do need to look at. And we may never need it, but in case we do, we don't have to, you know, we don't have to lose. I have seen some of the fallbacks on when people retire and are immediately brought back. The county has done that in several instances. And it does hurt morale of the rest of the department. And so, we need to be really cautious about how we proceed with that. Thank you.
Good comments.
Well, I think, I think that it has to be done on a basis of what, what the true need is. And, and like if you go out to the sewer plant, how many people can walk in there and, and know what they're doing? You've got people that are really, really good at that, that you don't want to get rid of. They would be helpful if you could keep them. Now, there might be five of them that want to stay, but maybe you only need two or three or whatever. But there'd be, need to be a lot of discretion done when you're deciding.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you to your, you and your staff for all the work you put into that, so, thank you. All right, next item is our boards and commissions. And I'm going to kick this off a little bit. Donna and I actually will speak first, and then we'll hand it off to our attorney, Mr. Brett Wallace. But just to kind of give a little background, we've talked about this over the last four years. I think it's been four years. It's been a while. And as Donna and I got knee-deep into, you know, talking and looking at ordinances and going through the whole process of, of interviewing folks for all of our boards and commissions, which, first of all, let me say thank you to all of our boards and commission members because without them, really, we would not have the input and, and really the feedback from our community. So, they are really our eyes and ears in the community, and they do a great job. And they don't get thanked enough, so I just want to first say that. And then, secondly, there'll be no decisions or, or, you know, decisions made tonight in terms of these boards and commissions. This is to kind of give an update to the council on some of the proposed changes and ask for, you know, any input that you might have as we move this process forward. But definitely Brett's staff has done a lot of work on this. We wanted to clean up some of the statutes. We have probably half a dozen boards and commissions that don't meet anymore, that are really kind of outdated. So, this is an opportunity to update all of our boards and commissions. And we really would like to do it in one big fell swoop. Now, it won't roll out that way because we'd have to stagger the boards. So, what will happen is we'll, you will present this whole plan to you, and then you'll actually end up approving or disapproving. The format of the different boards will change. The ordinances where necessary, not all the boards are changing. So, this isn't a wholesale change on every board, which, which Brett will go through. And, but it is an update. So, there's some statutory things that we need to do. There's some policy things we need to do to consolidate. We want to consolidate some of the boards. And, and he'll go through all of that. And it's really an opportunity for us to kind of clean up. Some of these boards have not been touched for like 30 years. So, they just need to be modernized, updated. And we've changed. Obviously, the city's changed a lot in the last 30 years. So, so there's some, some boards that don't need to be there and maybe a reformation of some other boards that, that need to be there. So, this is, this is our attempt to, to kind of give that information. Brett's going to present it to, to you all. And then Donna, you had a couple of things you wanted to add.
Well, just to, to add to that, to recap where we've been. One of the things that we did early on is that when we started looking at the boards and commissions, we wanted to take a firm look at who we had on the boards and how long they'd been there and try to formalize so that most of the boards were all the same. One of the things that we did, we started interviewing them for their first time around. But the biggest thing we started, when they were up for reappointment, we actually started re-interviewing them. And we found out what was working well, what was not working well. We, we talked to the staff that was in charge of that board or commission to find out, had they been attending, had they been, you know, active? And so, we tried to do some of that preliminary work. And, and a lot of the comments that we got from those being reappointed has helped it direct where we are today. And so, that's the one thing that we have included them along the way in finding out what, what was needed. Some of the boards and commissions, as the mayor said, have not been active for a while because things have changed. They've been kind of encompassed with other activities. Community services is a great example of that. And so, we were just trying to unify them so that most of the boards were the same as much as we could as far as how many people, how many terms, those type of things. But along the way, what we found, the ordinances and some of the other things were very, very outdated. We're talking, you know, as he said, 30 years ago. And, and when you look at advisory capacities with some of these boards, we want to make sure that all board members understand what the guidelines are for them when they come in, but also what they do for us and what we need to do to make their experience better. And some of these boards, there's not a need for them to meet all the time. And so, you would, we would appoint somebody and they wouldn't meet for three years that they were on. And that doesn't make sense of their time. And, and so, those are some of the changes that we talked about, so.
Yeah, and identifying really their, their, their job, you know, what, what the expectations are too. So, we're a little more clear in the ordinance as to what the expectations are for, for that particular board and commission.
And what we found is, it's not, more is not better. We want, you know, quality, not quantity.
Right. Mayor? You had a comment, Mr. Powell?
Yeah, I don't, one of the things that troubles me a little bit is you and Donna shouldn't be the only two that do the interviewing. And that's, that's what's happening.
And I think everybody on this board has been invited.
Mr. Lavender's also been involved, so.
Let me, let me continue. Is basically what usually happened, if we were doing a planning committee, they would pick whoever was in charge of that. And, and they would come and interview. The mayors don't normally come. They normally have council people that go in with somebody else on that, and it keeps us opened up to what's going on. And, and I think that's one of the things that, that we've missed out on. And I don't think it's a good idea to have just two people that do it routinely.
Well, I will, I will tell you that you've all been invited to be part of those interviews. And the only two that have taken me up on it is Donna and Mr. Lavender. So, I don't want to get in a.
Well, I did. I had to ask to be in it, but.
No, everybody was offered. And statutorily, the mayor is the one who puts up the candidates for these positions. So, from that perspective, you know, it, it's my responsibility to, to pick the candidates. Now, I think it's a good idea to include the council. I think the council should be involved in it. And I've tried to involve the council as much as possible in, in all of these. So, I'm not sure where you're going with that, but.
Well, as I say, I, I, I think that the more you can use people in our community that, that want to help, want to be part of something here, I think it's a real asset.
I agree, totally.
I don't think it's an issue. And as I say, I think that, that too often we, we don't get the, probably the, the normal people we would want in certain committees, but most of the time, we do. Most of our committees are, are staffed with people that can handle it. But it, but it would be a good feeling for to have the council take, take turns with, not even with you, with somebody else that's, that's the head of a department that we're dealing with. Is, that's what usually came in, used to. We'd have the department head come in and, and then ask questions. And he would normally have the information, okay, that'd be good for that or that wouldn't be good for that. But as I say, I, I hate to see us depart too much from having these, these commissions.
Everything, everything we have here does exactly everything that you're talking about. We're not departing from any of our rules in terms of how we choose people for these boards. This is purely just cleaning up some of the ordinances and some of the policies that we've had. It doesn't change anything in terms of how we go select people for these boards and commissions.
How do we know which ordinances are changed, though, when you do that?
You're going to see them all.
Right now?
Well, this is just, this is a study session, Mr. Powell. So, the goal here is to give, bring you up to speed in terms of all of the things and the changes in the boards. Now, ultimately Brett has the new ordinances that he, he's drawn up, and that you will be given those new ordinances. I don't think you're going to go through all the ordinances tonight because there's, it's mega, mega pages. So, but you will see them before you vote on them. And we'll, we'll go through the changes so you can get the general gist of, of structurally how it might change. But again, the selection process and who we put on there and how we go about getting them on there is not part of this process whatsoever. All right, so that's still, you know, Carlos is going to post it in the paper. We're going to, we're going to advertise for openings in our, on the boards, whatever board is coming up, just like we've done in the past. And, and I promise that you will have an opportunity to sit on that review with, and we do it with staff in situations where staff is available and/or needs to be there. Because some of these boards, staff doesn't need, staff doesn't need to be there, but they are there probably half of the time, at least. So, in, in the, in the reviews that Donna and Jeff and I have done. So, so that's not changing, Mr. Powell, okay? None of that is changing.
And I, and I understand your point, but I do want to thank you guys because you guys really have, the last few years, really taken charge and moved and, and been consistent with, you know, making all these changes. So, I do appreciate it. And, you know, Mayor, you, you have done a good job in reaching out to us when there's, when there's a need on commissions. Hey, guys, I'm looking for someone on this. You know, we have to do our due diligence and make sure that we're following up and everything too. But, but the only thing with Dick's talking about, you know, when you, when you are doing the committee interviews, I don't think I've gotten too many of those, you know, requests or, you know, inquiries if I want to participate. But it's okay. I mean, you know, but just maybe in the future, just remember, maybe, you know, some of us might want to participate. But I think you guys have done a really good job. And, and we are getting the, the emails, I'm getting people, you know, to, to make sure that we're, you're getting input from everyone on a lot of these commissions.
Right.
I really do appreciate everything you guys have done. It is a lot, but I understand your point.
And I'll make a more concerted effort to make sure that when we, before we have a review, we'll, we'll make sure we copy everybody.
Yeah.
And know, and know that you are welcome to be part of that interview process.
Mayor, one question?
Yeah, Matt?
Obviously, just want to make sure that the youth commission was thought about in there because they do their selection process a little bit differently because they're peer-selected, still appointed by the mayor and council, but they do their own interviews. So, just want to make sure that that's somehow included in the wording of what we're going to change.
They, they are. Well, they're actually not changing, so, other than the fact that we are, other than the fact that we are going to have a, have a policy statement in there that allows them to be members, non-voting members of other boards and commissions, like planning and zoning potentially. Just, I just throw that out as an example. And that, 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 well, that policy change is in these new discussions.
And they're looking forward to the, the Community Services Advisory Board as well since they're.
Right, that would be another one, that'd be, that'd be another one. In other words, wherever it's appropriate, then we're going to be able to, the council, to council's discretion, be able to appoint a, a youth commission member to one of those appropriate boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Okay. Brett, would you like to kind of go through your presentation?
Sure. For better or for worse, I don't often do presentations before the council. I usually just answer questions. And it looked like I wasn't going to have to do one tonight either. But I am prepared to do that, so I'll, I'll do. either. But I am prepared to do that, so I'll do that tonight. So I just want to go through kind of quickly the sort of what we're calling the Boards and Commissions Update Project. As the mayor described, the mayor and council member McBride spoke with us, spoke with the clerk's office to kind of look at our boards and commissions, and they had some ideas to, ways to be more inclusive and more consistent in our boards and commissions. And so, you know, we've tried to work with them on that, and these are some of the recommendations that are coming through that. And I'll also talk through the process. Again, none of these changes are coming unless the mayor and council vote for them later. It's the down button, Stephen. Stephen told me the up button because he loves that sound, I think. So just real quick, and I know we're going to run short on time, just to thank you, obviously, to our boards and commission members. They obviously provide an invaluable service to the city and its development. They can advise the city council on a wide variety of subjects, engage the community on items that are important to the development of the city. They partner with our departments to serve as innovators and change catalysts and even make final determinations in certain cases, like the Planning and Zoning and Historic Preservation Commission on certain items that come before you. So a big thank you to all of our boards and commissions, and also all of our staff that works with them. They do a great job in doing that. Just by, just a quick, you know, stat, the currently, currently list, we certainly currently list 18 active boards and commissions, not counting the CFDs, and we have approximately 90 volunteer positions available. But as the mayor and council member McBride talked about, not all of those currently meet regularly, and some of the positions on the boards, like the golf advisory board, hasn't been filled in a while on the contemplation of sort of merging those boards. So we'll talk a little bit about that. Just a quick overview of what we're going to go through and what our framework was as we looked at this. We were looking at sort of an increase in membership for some of the boards that have five, to move them to seven, simply to allow for consistency as well as additional participation of members of the community. We also wanted to try to get the terms equal when we can, and I'll talk about some times where we might not be able to do that, but all of the terms being three years. Some have two, some have four, and so having that consistent term is kind of nice. We're looking at disbanding some of the boards that are not regularly used, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, creating new boards where they're appropriate, and we'll discuss that as well. And as the mayor had pointed out, amending some of our codes to be more consistent with what our practice and best practices are. So quickly, the first sort of goal was to have seven members on each board when possible for consistency of participation. Many boards currently have seven, so they won't have any changes to the numbers. The airport advisory board, who has five, will actually increase to seven without making other changes. But not all boards will have seven members. So the fire retirement board, the police retirement board, their members are set by statute. So you have five, including some voted-in members. We're obviously not going to change that. We're also not making a recommendation to change the Board of Appeals, who looks at like our building codes and certain building appeals because of the specialized nature and the difficulty in even getting a quorum for that under existing terms. The youth commission obviously has up to 16 members for increased participation, so we're not looking at changing the membership there. And the IDA membership actually is established by statute at three to nine members, but they do currently have seven. As far as moving to three-year terms, again, we're going to try to do that where it's possible, just for consistency, and most of the boards are going to have, propose to move to three-year terms. The Board of Adjustment and the Board of Appeals, for example, would be moved from four years currently to three years. And other boards, which we'll talk about a little bit, like the library advisory board, which is currently four, would move to three as it gets reconfigured into the community services board. Some boards, we're not going to change the three-year terms, so while I tell you we're looking at doing that, fire and police retirement boards, for example, are set at four years by statute. The IDA is set at six years by statute, and the youth commission does theirs annually as a member, as the unique nature of that board. So there's no changes proposed to those. We talked about getting rid of certain boards. These are ones that are not regularly used or needed, and the idea is just to move those board duties into other existing or new boards. One of those, I know that, for example, we've talked about the personnel advisory board. It was available for us under our old personnel policy. Council made a change to move towards a hearing officer format, so the personnel advisory board is no longer necessary. We just want to make sure that that's formally disbanded in the ordinance. Same thing with the health trust board. Council approved moving back to the fully insured model, and now that it's completed its work, we'd remove it from the statute. Some board duties will end up merging into existing or new boards. So, for example, golf, library, and parks advisory move into a proposed new community services advisory board. That one's actually been sitting out there on our agenda quick for a long time, but we wanted to kind of get the whole process down together so that you could talk about a number of these and evaluate them before we started to move into those. The heritage commission, who really looks at naming opportunities for the city primarily and does not meet very often, so it was proposed that they might merge with the historic preservation commission. That would also probably move from five members to seven, so it would give a little bit of extra participation, but just move those duties into that as well since they rarely do meet. And the clean and beautiful commission has really been gone for a long time. They moved into the community services, just staff doing the work, and so we're likely to just go ahead and clean that up at the same time and leave that as part of the community services job. So the creation of the new boards, are we talking about a couple of different ones to combine duties or establish additional scope? One of those is a seven-member community services board, which replaced the existing boards, as we just discussed, within the department. The other one is to create a seven-member public safety advisory board. The proposal would essentially disband the existing police advisory board, just by really expanding that to include other public safety aspects. So it would include, obviously, our fire department and any other public safety aspects that we continue to move forward to, so. And as the mayor mentioned, there's no changes to many boards. We talk about a lot of these, but a lot of these boards are not going to change at all. Planning and zoning, the arts and humanities commission aren't going to change. Some boards aren't also changing due to other requirements. Our part-time firefighters board of trustees has a unique makeup and a very limited scope, so we're not proposing any change to that. The youth commission and the IDA similarly have either a unique makeup or a statutory requirement that makes us not make any recommendations to change those. And then the other generalized changes that we're looking at, these are some of the things that are in our code and always look at when we're doing these, if we can sort of clean it up. So one of the pieces that we have, our code currently requires all members to be electors within the city. And the council policy has always been that it'll be a resident, but the council can waive residency requirements when it's appropriate. So I think we just need to clean this piece of our code up. There are certain ones, like the IDA, that by statute have to be electors in the city, so that obviously wouldn't change, but your generalized board thing would just be more consistent with what you do. And it would make the policy, right now, you have to kind of go in and ask the clerk for a copy of the council policy with respects to boards and commissions, and it would go ahead and statutorily codify it so anybody could sort of look and understand. The council has that ability by the statute itself to change that. Same thing, currently, council can remove anyone by, of the boards and commissions, can do that, but I want to make sure that if someone else, like in my position later on, if they say, hey, I want to remove one of the elected firefighters, right, the answer is, no, you can't do that because they were elected to the board. So we just want to clean up that a little bit to say, you can remove them unless you can't by statute. There's actually a reference in, and right now, council approves sort of the board officers, but only through approval of like the minutes, right? You don't really approve who the officers are, and you allow the boards and commission members to choose them for themselves. And so, but there's a provision that says that council's going to approve all those board officers. Since we don't usually do it formally, we're recommending that you change that. We're also recommending that you allow council to expressly allow for different quorums. Generally, you're going to be looking at a majority of the membership to serve as a quorum, but you've already approved, at least for the youth commission, a smaller one for quorums because of the size of that. So we just want to make that express approval. You had the ability to do it, and you did it, but we just want to make sure that that's express. Probably the most important one is to provide the ability to allow youth membership on committees in some capacity. Clearly, anybody who's 18 can be appointed as a full-fledged member, but we're talking about allowing some of these to serve and the ability to appoint them to serve at least in an advisory capacity, where they can have a seat. You can get the input and inclusivity that they have, you know, you can get all of those and have the express ability to do it. I think that's a very important change to make sure that that's relatively clear in the code as well. And Mayor, did you have a question on that? Okay. And that's really all of the other pieces, and then we'll work with the clerk to provide more readily available board training. We're talking about doing a video training so that as board members come on, they'd have something to watch and be able to get up to speed quickly on all of the things you're well-versed in, like open meeting law and public records, so. So obviously, our first step was to work to identify some of these potential areas of amendment and conduct a study session. After this, the next steps would be, if council asks us to go forward, to work with the stakeholder departments to help draft the changes to the ordinance with an emphasis on the duties of the boards. You know, for example, for the new public safety board, we'd certainly be trying to reach out to both of the chiefs to talk about what that board should look like, what are sort of the duties, and then working with the city manager's office as well before we would bring anything back to the council. We're also going to work with the clerk, since they obviously work hard towards staffing that, to talk about appropriate staggering of the boards and when we should bring in these things. And they're going to be responsible for bringing so many of them to council for approval. So that's something we would need to do. An example of that is there's two new positions on the airport board. We need to look at when's the best time to bring them in so that you can have staggering. Staggering on the boards is, we're doing a pretty good job of it. The clerk's office has really done a good job, along with the mayor and council, at trying to get those in there, but it's very important so you don't lose giant chunks of experience at the same time. And then after that, we'd bring any ordinances to council for consideration. So that's kind of a quick overview of the boards process, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have or go into any other pieces of it.
The one thing that Brett and I had talked about and Donna is that in the ordinances, we'll try and hopefully design the ordinances such that the job expectations, right, or the, the expectations on what the board should do will be kind of highlighted in, you know, in just a section, so you don't have to read through the whole thing. And then we'll use that as part of our video training for new board members. So it should consolidate, should give new board members a little, a much quicker look at, you know, what do you want me to do, kind of a thing, so.
I think it's great. Yeah, really good. I think, you know, especially with the descriptions and, you know, sometimes people don't know what they're getting into.
Right.
So I think that's important. So it consolidating, I mean, yeah, no, I think, you know, good work, and I think it'll be great.
Anybody else have any comments or anything you saw that was?
Mayor, I think you did a real good job, and you too, Brett. Appreciate it.
And Donna, too.
When you have a planning meeting from now on, I remember I asked you, I'd like to be on it. You didn't put me on it.
We haven't had any.
Yes, we did. We had two people that went on.
Oh, well, they were already interviewed prior to you asking me. Anyway.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Powell said, we organize so that the second meeting that we have every month as a council, those are, before that, we come in and we interview. And so that is always open to other people.
Yep.
We got a crowd out there.
Okay. Any other comments, Brett? Okay, so we think what maybe, first meeting in February, second meeting in February?
Depending on, we can certainly bring some of these ordinances to you, you know, beginning as early as the first meeting in February.
If you need more time, take more time. I mean, we've been waiting on this forever.
Yeah, well, certainly, we're going to work with the clerk's office, but I know they've, you know, they've already started that process, and they've been involved because they were the ones that got us all the ordinances and everything to review in the first place.
Well, and if we get all the ordinances done, we can deal with them all at one time, and then we can implement them on a phased-in basis, right? So they don't all have to be effective at the same time, but I think if we look at them all at the same time, might make it a little easier for you because you don't have to do it 15 times.
I just have to do it 15 times once.
Okay. No other comments, then? We'll stand adjourned for five minutes.